Good evening and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners zoning public hearing. It is Thursday, May 25, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I thank you all for coming and request that you please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner James Dutton to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Ryan Bolden to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Please join me.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Father, we come together tonight as leaders of this fine community. Father, please bless us with Thy Spirit that we will know Thy will here in Spalding County. Father, please help us to make the decisions that will bring this county up and closer to Thee. Please help us to make decisions that the people in this county will look back 10, 20, 30 years from now and agree with. Father, please help all those who stand in harm's way tonight that they will be able to return to their families and no harm or danger will come to them. Father, please bless all those that are sick and afflicted and those that mourn for the deaths of loved ones tonight that they will be comforted. Father, we ask these blessings humbly in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you would, please join me in placing our flag.
Placing our flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. If you have, if this is your first time here and you're unaware, what you see on the big screen up here is exactly what's in front of the county commissioners. So it's absolutely totally transparent. Item D, presentation and proclamation, consider approval of a proclamation declaring May 21st to 27th, 2023 as National Public Works Week in recognition of the Spalding County Public Works Department and the hard work these individuals put forward every day. Dr. Ledbetter?
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening's proclamation is in recognition of the National Public Works Week, May 21 through 27, 2023. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Spalding County. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding and improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Spalding County to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in the understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Now therefore , be it resolved, the Spalding County Board of Commissioners do hereby designate the week of May 21 through 27, 2023 as National Public Works Week and urge all citizens to join with government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, Chairman Davis heretofore sets forth his hand to cause the seal of the county to be affixed this 10th day of May in the year of our Lord 2023.
Director.
Thank you, County Manager, Mr. Chairman. Public works is an exciting career to partake, and I'm also extremely proud to be able to work with our public works professionals. Here in Spalding County, it consists of 60, over 60 people in the following divisions: Roads, Construction, Solid Waste, Mechanic Shop, and Science and Graphics. Recently, our Public Works Department was featured in a national publication, Roads and Bridges. We have multiple employees that have secured APWA Operators of the Year classifications. We have the 2021 State of Georgia APWA Employee of the Year. We have five employees currently enrolled in the National APWA Public Works Institute Program. We are only the second Public Works Department in the state of Georgia to become certified to print nationally standard MUTCD signage. Our Solid Waste Department recently secured a $324,000 reimbursement from Georgia EPD for our Yama Crawl Road project. We continue and are excited about T-S blast, and we have completed numerous road improvement fund projects this year. So thank you very much for your support. This evening, I would like to introduce some of our exceptional staff that will be joining us for the picture, and I'll call them up one at a time. Solid Waste Supervisor, Mr. Kevin King. Randy King, I'm sorry. I have two Kings. I'm not going to hear the end of this one. Sorry, Mrs. King. Senior Officer Tavalis Daniel. Road Supervisor, Charles Dotson. Senior Officer Kenneth Wilkerson. Officer Camila Moore. Construction Supervisor, Kevin King. Officer Gary Fletcher, and Officer Naomi Palmetier. And this is just a small representation of our great staff, and it's a pleasure to service you, the commissioners, and our citizens. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Get a picture?
Sure.
Is everybody in? Everybody seen the camera?
Yeah.
Steve, come on. Steve, you're one of these people.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Randy.
Congratulations, Stahl, if you would. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yes.
Item number E, public hearings. Persons desiring to speak must sign up in for the appropriate application. When called, speakers must sign their names, state their names and addresses, and direct all comments to the board only. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertaining, being considered by the Board of Commissioners on this agenda. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. Item number one, lift from the table and conduct a public hearing on application 23-03S, Minerva Spring Lake LLP. Owner 2336, Teeman Road, approximately 99.214 acres located in Land Lot 231 and 232 in the Third Land District. The applicant is requesting a special exception to allow clustered dwellings, single-family detached homes with open space with traditional design within the R2 Single Family Residential District. Director Reese.
Did we vote to lift from the table?
We didn't. Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to lift.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Did you second? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Four. All those opposed, one. Thank you.
Do we want to make a motion to go into public hearing? No, Kathy?
No, because we're in the public hearing.
Okay. All right, good.
Okay, thank you. Director Reese.
Yes, good evening, Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. Tonight, our case referenced as 23-03S, Minerva Spring Lake LLP. The owner, Teeman Road, approximately 99.214 acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception to allow clustered dwellings, single-family detached houses with open space with a traditional design with R2 Single Family Residential District. They have already received two variances. The first variance was in regards to setbacks, and there was a reduction of the front yard setback to 20 feet, reduction of side yard setback zero to eight feet, reduction of corner side yard to 10 feet. And the other variance that was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals was cul-de-sac diameter asphalt to asphalt of 96 feet diameter. And also, if you please note, the development is going to have 200, well, they're proposing 295 units, reduction from 340, 43. I also want to add before we give our staff recommendation that they had submitted their traffic study. And if I can highlight some of the items from the traffic study, existing traffic operations and delays are generally acceptable at the three study intersections. Left turn delays from Teeman Road at State Route 155 are moderately high, but a change in control is not recommended for the existing condition. Therefore, no mitigation is identified for the existing condition. They did recognize in their findings, within the past five years, there were 12 crashes. However, most of those crashes were non-vehicular related. Did not put this as a condition, but it was a recommendation in the traffic study that a possible installation of a deer crossing sign for passengers coming to and fro of Teeman Road. We did add a condition in our recommendations, we find in item M, but let me first, let me first go over the other conditions. I apologize. Staff did recommend approval with the following conditions. That they are as follows. Sorry about that. Number one, net density of the development on subject property shall not exceed three dwellings per one acre. B, the number of residential lots shall not exceed 295 lots. Again, that was a reduction from 343, and proposed plan of 48 lots. That was a reduction of 48 lots. The minimum house size for all residential dwellings shall be a minimum of 2,000 square feet. Item D, the subdivision shall be limited to the traditional design and shall comply with all development and design requirements set forth in our zoning code, Section 413G2A. No vinyl siding shall be used on the exterior of any dwelling. Prior to approval of a final plat, the developer shall present proposed documents to create a HOA for the development. Prior to approval of final plat, the developer shall present restrictive covenants which restrict the rental of dwellings to 10% of the total dwellings in the subdivisions based on the number of units constructed at the time. H, the proposed elevations for dwellings to be built in the subdivision will provide appropriate architectural and aesthetics design requirements which shall be made a condition of rezoning. Staff will make sure during the permitting process that we have that in our files in terms of making sure that the right materials and the design that's been proposed is actually being implemented by the developer. Item I, prior to the hearing conducted on the application before the Board of Commissioners, the developer shall consist with the consult with the Spalding County Public Works Department to assess whether improvements to Teeman and Smoke Roads will be required as a result of the development on the subject property and the degree to which contribution from the developer should be imposed. Item J, as required by the UDO, Section 413G2A2, the developer shall reserve space at the entrance into the site development from both Teeman and Smoke Roads. If an entry is developed there for a landscape entry with appropriate signage designating the site development commensurate with the design, architecture, and aesthetic character of the site development and shall provide plans for review and approval of signage by the Board of Commissioners. K, the Board of Commissioners must conduct a hearing on the Bryce Strickland Cemetery located on the subject property, which shall review the report of RS Web and Associates. I'm sorry, L, the conditions imposed on the development of the subject property shall continue to apply to it in the event of transfer to a third-party or successor developer. And once again, I, well, prior to this recommendation, I just went over some of the aspects of the traffic study. So as a result of that, we added an additional condition. Item M, turning lanes will be required from Teeman Road. Applicant/ developer will work with Public Works Department to determine access specifications.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's up to you if you would like the applicant or if you would open it up to the public.
Just open it up to the people who've signed up.
All right. At this time, I would invite Art Ross to the podium. If you would, please step forward and state your address for the record, please. Your name and your address.
Yes, hello. My name is Art Ross, 443 Goldenrod Court in Sun City. Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager, Community Development Director and staff. What Minerva Spring Lake LP is proposing with a special exception, application number 2303S for clustered dwellings, does not match up with the neighboring properties or developments. The goal of the current R2 zoning is to preserve quiet, relatively low to medium-density neighborhoods. R2 zoning states that the lot size exceeds 20,000 square feet. Minerva is applying for the special exception to change the lot size to 6,000 square feet, which is 52-foot lot width, with only eight to 10 feet between homes. Garage reduced to 20 feet from the sidewalk. How does this provide room to raise a family? Minerva's application for the special exception was originally for 343 detached, single-family homes, but due to recommendations imposed by the community development staff, it is now 295 homes, but still to be built on 99-acre parcel of land, which means the homes will be built right on top of each other with no privacy. Since they're our family homes, there could be three to four vehicles per household. Where will they all be parked when they are so close to the street and the houses are so close together? How will emergency vehicles get in and out of the community with cars parked on the streets? This does not match the rural feel of Spalding County. Although Brian Davidson, managing partner of Minerva, has agreed to many recommendations by the community development staff, he needs to also agree to the left and right turn lanes to be added for the entrance to Teeman Point as recommended by the traffic feasibility study that he had completed. For safety concerns and because the entrance to the Teeman Point is close to the curve, streetlights should also be added to light the entrance. Minerva compares Teeman Point to the Villas in Heron Bay. Heron Bay homes' value range from 300,000 to over 800,000. Minerva is requesting to build 295 homes right on top of each other in Teeman Point. 295 homes on such a small parcel of land is unacceptable for the residents who already reside near the proposed development site. 295 homes, mostly two-story homes, three homes per acre, built just eight feet apart from each other, only 20 feet from the sidewalk. They have not compared Teeman Point to Big Pine Farms on Smoke Road, which will have 12,000 or 15,000 square foot lots. Right next door to Teeman Point, and will have 247 homes built on 285 acres. Big Pine Farms meets the low to medium-density requirement for R2, allows for families to have privacy, gives room for the children to grow, and matches the rural feel of Spalding County. Minerva is trying to build 295 homes on a property that when you review the site analysis of the development, and the net acreage for the development is 83.2 acres. Subtract the open space that leaves 58.6 acres. When you subtract the cemetery right away from Roosevelt Railway, 20 miles of roads, and detention areas, there is less than 40 acres left to build 295 homes. Commissioners, does this make any sense to you at all? Thank you for your time and consideration of these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you. Molly Graham?
Molly Graham, 611 Larch Looper, Griffin, Sun City Peachtree. Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager, Community Development Director and staff. As a former educator, Teeman Point with 295 homes consisting of families which could have a minimum of two children per household. This adds to the potential of 590 children from Teeman Point, and Big Pine Farm, which equals 494 students. The new Heron Bay Pods adds 612 students, and Grayson Park adds 438 students at two per household for development. Total, 2,134 students potentially added from the 5th District to the Spalding County School System, attending the Jordan Hill Elementary School, Kennedy Road Middle School, and Spalding County High School. Are the schools prepared for the student population influx? There are already portable classrooms at these schools. What about the cost of additional school buses? The Spalding County School System is already struggling to fill the current level of teachers needed for the current student population. Has there been any consideration by the developers to communicate with the superintendent of schools? Prior to approval of final plat, the developer shall present restrictive covenants which restrict the rental of dwellings to 10% of the total dwellings in the subdivisions, based on the number of units constructed at the time. H, the proposed elevations for dwellings to be built in the subdivision will provide appropriate architectural and aesthetics design requirements which shall be made a condition of rezoning. Staff will make sure during the permitting process that we have that in our files in terms of making sure that the right materials and, and the design that's been proposed is actually being implemented by the developer. Item I, prior to the hearing conducted on the application before the Board of Commissioners, the developer shall consist with the, consult with the Spalding County Public Works Department to assess whether improvements to Teeman and Smoke Roads would be required as a result of the development on the subject property and the degree to which contribution from the developer should be imposed. Item J, as required by the UDO, section 413 G2A2, the developer shall reserve space at the entrance into the site development from both Teeman and Smoke Roads. If an entry is developed there for a landscape entry with appropriate signage designating the site development commensurate with the design, architecture, and aesthetic character of the site development and shall provide plans for review and approval of signage by the Board of Commissioners. K, the Board of Commissioners must conduct a hearing on the Bryce Strickland Cemetery located on the subject property, which shall review the report of RS Web and Associates. I, I'm sorry, L, the conditions imposed on the development of the subject property shall continue to apply to it in the event of transfer to a third-party or successor developer. And once again, I, well, prior, prior to this recommendation, I just went over some of the aspects of the traffic study. So as a result of that, we added an additional condition. Item M, turny lanes will be required from Teeman Road. Applicant slash developer will work with Public Works Department to determine access specifications.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It's up to you if you'd like the applicant or if you would open it up to the public.
Just open it up to the people who've signed up.
All right. At this time, I would invite Art Ross to the podium. If you would, please step forward and state your address for the record, please. Your name and your address.
Yes, hello. My name is Art Ross, 443 Goldenrod Court in Sun City. Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager, Community Development Director and Staff. What Minerva Spring Lake LP is proposing, with the special exception of application number 2303-S for cluster dwellings, does not match up with the neighbor, neighboring properties or developments. The goal of the current R2 zoning is to preserve quiet, relatively low to medium-density neighborhoods. R2 zoning states that the lot size exceeds 20,000 square feet. Minerva is applying for the, for the special exception to change the lot size to 6,000 square feet, which is 52-foot lot width, with only eight to 10 feet between homes. Garage reduced to 20 feet from the sidewalk. How does this provide room to raise a family? Minerva's application for the special exception was originally for 343 detached, single-family homes, but due to recommendations imposed by the community development staff, it is now 295 homes, but still to be built on 99-acre parcel of land, which means the homes will be built right on top of each other with no privacy. Since they're our family homes, there could be three to four vehicles per household. Where will they all be parked when they are so close to the street and the houses are so close together? How will emergency vehicles get in and out of the community with cars parked on the streets? This does not match the rural feel of Spalding County. Although Brian Davidson, managing partner of Minerva, has agreed to many recommendations by the community development staff, he needs to also agree to the left and right turn lanes to be added for the entrance to Teeman Point, as recommended by the traffic feasibility study that he had completed. For safety concerns and because the entrance to the Teeman Point is close to the curve, streetlights should also be added to light the entrance. Minerva compares Teeman Point to the Villas and Heron Bay. Heron Bay homes' value range from $300,000 to over $800,000. Minerva is requesting to build 295 homes right on top of each other in Teeman Point. 295 homes on such a small parcel of land is unacceptable for the residents who already reside near the proposed development site. 295 homes, mostly two-story homes, three homes per acre, built just eight feet apart from each other, only 20 feet from the sidewalk. They have not compared Teeman Point to Big Pines Farms on Smoke Road, which will have 12,000 or 15,000 square feet, foot lots, right next door to Teeman Point, and will have 247 homes built on 285 acres. Big Pine Farms meets the low to medium-density requirement for R2, allows for families to have privacy, gives room for the children to grow, and matches the rural feel of Spalding County. Minerva is trying to build 295 homes on a property that, when you review the site analysis of the development, and the net acreage for the development is 83.2 acres, subtract the open space that leaves 58.6 acres. When you subtract the cemetery, right-of-way from Roosevelt Railway, 20 miles of roads, and detention areas, there is less than 40 acres left to build 295 homes. Commissioners, does this make any sense to you at all? Thank you for your time and consideration of these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you. Molly Graham.
Molly Graham, 611 Larch Looper, Griffin, Sun City Peachtree. Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager, Community Development Director and Staff. As a former educator, Teeman Point with 295 homes consisting of families which could have a minimum of two children per household. This adds to the potential of 590 children from Teeman Point, add Big Pine Farm, which equals 494 students, the new Heron Bay Pods adds 612 students, and Grayson Park adds 438 students at two per household, per development. Total, 2,134 students potentially added from the 5th District to the Spalding County School System, attending the Jordan Hill Elementary School, Kennedy Road Middle School, and Spalding County High School. Are the schools prepared for this student population influx? There are already portable classrooms at these schools. What about the cost of additional school buses? The Spalding County School System is already struggling to fill the current level of teachers needed for the current student population. Has there been any consideration by the developers to communicate with the superintendent of schools and the school board on these new developments coming into District 5 and the increase to student population for the affected schools? Has the Spalding County School System completed a feasibility study on the increase of the student population, number of schools that would need to be built, and the school buses that need to be provided? Another issue, even with a proposed 10% rental cap for Teeman Point, that is still too high with Spalding County already at 70% rental properties. The county needs single-family homes for purchase so the residents can achieve the American dream of owning their own home and raising their families. Rental caps need to be placed at 5% because home ownership also ensures that the homeowner will have a stake in the county by paying property tax and school taxes. These issues need to be considered before approval of the Teeman Point development or any new development in the 5th District, and especially the cluster homes, which are not conducive to raising a family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Graham.
I'm Michelle Dregoz, 244 Sawgrass Place, Griffin, Sun City Peachtree. Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager, Community Development Director and Staff. With this proposed high-density development of 295 homes in Teeman Point, Big Pines Farm with 247 homes, Sun City Peachtree adding 1,700 homes, the three Heron Bay Pods of 306 homes, Grayson Park with 119 single-family homes and 100 townhomes, there will be around 4,800 homes already in the pipeline to be built in the Teeman Road area and equates to a potential of 9,600 cars traveling on Teeman Road. All of these developments have been put in place since the last traffic feasibility study was completed in 2004. According to the traffic feasibility study submitted by Minerva, 4,089 vehicles were counted in one 24-hour period on Teeman Road just from current traffic. The traffic feasibility study conducted by Minerva shows only 12 accidents occurring on Teeman Road in the last five years. I submitted an open records request to the County Sheriff's Office and received a full report on accidents in the Teeman Road area that will be affected by this increase in population. The accident report shows 246 accidents occurring in the last 18 months in the Teeman Road, Jordan Hill, Baptist Camp, and Highway 155 areas. There have been 35 accidents in the last 18 months just at the intersections of Jordan Hill Road and Baptist Camp Road in front of Sun City Peachtree, and the intersection of Jordan Hill and Teeman Road at the four-way stop. 10 accidents alone have occurred on the curve along Teeman Road, along the Teeman Point proposed entrance in the last 18 months. This is why an independent traffic feasibility study needed to have been conducted by an independent contractor or by the county, not the developer. The roads are narrow and not built to handle this type of traffic, including the construction truck traffic for all of these new developments. Turn lanes would need to be added, just like at the front and back entrance of Sun City Peachtree, and the road widened because drivers cannot stay in their own lanes on the curves of Teeman Road that lead to the dangerous entrance of Teeman Point. Because of this dangerous situation with the entrance being so close to the curve, even though the speed limit is 45 miles per hour, we know that those drivers are speeding. So streetlights need to be installed along Teeman Road to safely light that area for the Teeman Point entrance, as well as sidewalks, to protect the children. How can we move this development forward when there needs to be improvement to the roads first in preparation for all of the new developments? Is there any consideration for the residents already residing on Teeman Road for access to their mailboxes? They already struggle to cross Teeman Road to safely get their mail. Commissioners, we are recommending that you follow the current R2 zoning and make sure that Minerva is meeting the, meeting the goal of the Board of Commissioners to raise the bar in Spalding County. Please give these major issues careful consideration before approving this special exception request. I ask that it be tabled until the traffic feasibility study be thoroughly investigated, the road improvements and traffic mitigation solutions be considered.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I have copies of the, of the, of the Sheriff's Record.
Good evening. My name is Lawrence Weeks. I live at 2966 Teeman Road. I've been over this before, but we'll do it again. At 2336 Teeman Road, there was a total of 99.214 acres. You take away the fire station and the railroad right-of-way, you have 83.2 acres. And then they put in open spaces of 24.6 acres, end up with 56.8 acres. Then they put in another open space with 24.4 acres, end up with 32.4 acres. You still have to delete the stormwater and the cemetery areas. It's going to be hard to build 200 houses on 25 acres. I have told, I, I have been told that Delwell will have 3,000 homes for the gate of Delwell Peachtree going west on Teeman Road. There is four other housing developments. They are within 1.1 miles, so are still, some are still building. Other are just starting. It's only about 150 yards west of Delwell Peachtree entrance where they're fixing to build one of the new developments. The deceleration lanes are going to be across the road from one another at this place. I went there today and looked at it myself. There are nine roads on Teeman Road that enter in 3.8 miles. There is only one that does not dead-end on Teeman Road, that's Trussell Road. It's just a dirt road that's gone to Johnson Road and to the new housing by Heron Bay, Minerva. And those people's going to be coming down Trussell Road, on Teeman Road, coming into Griffin, and taking all those shortcuts. And we've got too much traffic there already, and we don't need that many houses. I thank you for your time. God bless our country.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks.
Good evening, Commissioners. Most of the points that I've-
Mr. Settles, would you please state your name and your address for the record, please?
Brian Howard Settles, 817 Peach Blossom Court. Most of the points that have been voiced, I concur with. I am concerned that there would be some way to know what the response of the Commissioners is to the valid points that have been made here tonight. Too many times, I'm a senior citizen, 79-years-old combat veteran in Vietnam, and too many times these projects, I've seen it again and again, get rammed down the public's throat, even though there's qualified resistance to these projects. So I'd like to know what the Commissioners, how they're going to respond to some of these excellent points that have been made tonight. That's all. I would like to know how, how people know that these points are being responded to and not just glossed over and go ahead with, like a steamroller with a project that seems ill-advised, given the traffic impact and the school impact. Excellent point that the teacher made about the schools and the school buses. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Settles, and thank you for your service.
Mr. Robert Mock.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm open enough to be up here on the board, except one or two. Hey, James. I appreciate you giving me time.
Mr. Mock, will you state your name and your address, please?
Oh, excuse me. Robert Mock is my name. I live on 123 Bar H Road, which is directly off of Teeman Road. And due, with due respect to all parties here today, I'm not here to, to bring any adverse problems. I do believe in development, but it needs to have more study done on Teeman Road with the magnitude of development we're seeing out there on Teeman Road. The main concern, I would think, to all individuals, developers, and the board here today would be traffic, water, sewage, schools, and the possibility of maybe Section 8s. I don't know whether that's a possibility or not, but I just wanted to throw it up and bring it into the air. My son lived in a similar subdivision while he was having a house built in Noonan, Georgia, for about a year and two months, and it's going to be similar to cluster homes, and it's not a very desirable situation. And if you don't believe me, if you want to go look at it, I'll put you in my pickup and go show it to you. I'm that dedicated to this problem. But the traffic is going to get, we're fixing to develop a monster out there, and I don't know why we're trying to overdevelop, develop Teeman Road this quick and this fast. I think we need to drop back and punt and chill out and take a deep breath and do some more studies on this, on this project. Like, again, again, I'm not against development. I think it's a little too much at this time. For real, because you've got 1,700 more homes to be built in Sun City, and you've got 247 on the, on Smoke Road. We don't know the consequences of all of that yet, and the traffic's already a problem out there. I appreciate you giving me this time to talk to you, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Mock.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me? Bob Byer, 516 Orchid Lights Court, Sun City in Spalding County. It would be great if Spalding County could continue to grow with $800,000 homes on one-and-a-half acre lots, but that hope and outlook is a dream of the past. Our firefighters, police, deputies, nurses, schoolteachers are being forced to live in other counties that offer affordable housing. Spalding's lack of affordable housing makes it hard for us to recruit these essential workers. For example, we currently only have two firefighters per shift in each of our fire stations. This not only affects our safety, but it also affects our insurance rates. I live in Sun City. My wife and I love living there. It's a large development made up of cluster homes. This is the style that's being built in the Heron Bay addition, and this is the, the style that's being proposed for Spring Lake. Lot sizes, home style, and pricing are all similar. The precedent is in place. The closeness of homes allows us to have a close-knit neighborhood. We know and socialize with our neighbors. It's a very pleasant lifestyle. Minerva Spring Lake will offer the opportunity for this similar lifestyle for families. Neighborhoods that are well-planned offer an opportunity for a family-oriented, close-knit Last year, I was a member of the committee to develop the five-year review and update of the 2042 comp plan. After many public hearings and meetings, the final revision showed that Spalding County's housing development future was going to be in the northeast corner of the county. Development is coming. The demand is here and will continue. Under the county's supervision, it can be controlled and done properly. Spalding needs well-designed, well-designed, affordable housing for our nurses, teachers, and public service employees. Spalding needs that kind of housing to accommodate the industrial growth we want and need. And of course, the benefit of additional housing is that will increase our tax base to help fund schools and better roads. We've heard complaints about potential traffic problems. The recent completed traffic study done by Minerva shows that while traffic will see an increase in the area, it will still be within satisfactory levels. The intersection with Teeman and Highway 155 is and will continue to be troublesome. However, the recent update of the Spalding five-year comp traffic plan shows improvements at these, at this intersection is in planning by the state. This project is not a rental or Section 8 development. It provides a housing style that Spalding desperately needs. As a neighbor to this development, I encourage the county to allow the special exemption to Minerva's application 23-03-S. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byers.
Hello. My name's Don Friedman. I live at 103 Oding Cell Court, it's Sun City Peachtree. Good evening, Spalding County Commissioners. My neighbors are here tonight to once again cry that the sky is falling, and it could not be further from the truth. They'll exaggerate the numbers on everything, from rental properties to traffic to housing prices going down. I'm here tonight to present some facts. Page 45 of the Spalding County 2042 Comprehensive Plan for Sun City Heron Bay Estates will have moderate-to-high-density detached, single-family and two-family dwellings, and it'll provide unique housing concepts to serve the needs and desires of a multi-generational population. One could say cluster homes are a unique housing concept. In Sun City Peachtree, if we had two cars in every home, and we don't, that would amount to 3,400 cars existing now. If you add the Teeman Point and give just two cars to a household, that's 590 cars. That's half the number of cars that people have come up here and quoted before the Board of Commissioners and Zoning Board on numerous occasions and sent via email around Sun City as a scare tactic. Sun City Peachtree has a 3% to 3.5% rental rate. We don't even have a cap on our Sun City Peachtree, and we're very low. Please explain how that has driven down housing prices in our community or the surrounding areas when in fact the house pricing has gone up. To build a two-bedroom, two-bath, half home on .13 acres, which is what I have, it was based at $189,000 in November 2019. You can't get that house now for $284,000, a 50% increase in base price. That's not houses going down. 74% of the homes and acreage that will be built in Teeman Point are larger than the homes and acreage being sold in Sun City. And yet, Sun City is not reducing the prices of houses. At the current build rate, and we're at 105 homes a year, we won't be built out until 15 years from now. I also requested information from the Sheriff's Office on how many accidents there have been between the intersection of Teeman Road, Jordan Hill, and the intersection of Teeman and 155 since 2020. The data shows it's trending down, not up. That's with over 350 new homes built in Sun City, and you're talking about an additional 295 in Teeman Point. I also looked at the report that was given that said there's over 246 accidents. That's totally false information. If you read that report, there are multiple entries from the same accident, whether EMS came, fire, or law enforcement came. It's much less than that. In closing, Spalding County will benefit from the new tax revenues received from the new community, community being built in District 5, and it aligns with the current Spalding County 2042 Comprehensive Plan that you all approved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman.
Mr. Chairman, there is no one else who has signed up this evening for this case.
Do you want to hear from the applicant?
I think that's appropriate, but I want to ask the question before, if I can. Newton, just remind us, perk our brains, R2 is one acre or what's the acreage requirement in R2? Without any special-
R2 without a special exception has a requirement of one unit to two acres.
One unit to two acre.
Then you request a special exception, you can go down to one-acre lots with water. And then we do have a provision in there that allows for cluster dwellings, but to get cluster dwellings, you have to increase your square footage up to minimum 2,000, and then the dwelling, the dwelling units, 2,000 square feet, and the density cannot exceed six dwellings per acre. What we work, what Minerva has agreed to is three units per acre.
So, so then my other question is, so that's R2?
That's correct.
And what is the, the acreage requirement in R1?
R1's the same.
Same. And as far as square footage requirement on the house in R1 without a special exception?
Without a special exception, 2,000 square feet.
Okay. All right, now I'm good. Can you get my brain back working?
That's subject to double-check with, with Mr. Reese, but I believe that's correct from my memory.
Okay. Okay.
Would the applicant like to come forth and speak?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello again. I'm Brian Davison of Minerva USAA, 2292 Henderson Mill Road, Atlanta.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Similar topics as before with a few new additions that are not exactly accurate, I guess. I'll try to figure out where to go and try to keep it short here. First of all, the most glaring one is traffic, which is what we were sent away to do. We hired a third-party traffic engineer, came back, and he actually made the suggestion, or not recommendation, I guess, to do a westbound left turn lane on Teeman Road for safety. We're in agreement with that decision. He also feels that Sun City probably will be beneficial to have one at some point in the future for their access onto Teeman Road as well. It allows cars to stack in the left turn lane and cars to drive safely past them. Makes total sense. It was a three or four hundred thousand dollar cost addition, but I can't argue with the logic of it. And we're willing to accept the staff's recommendation on that. The traffic crash thing, I do have a copy of it. A huge amount of the people in the neighborhood send me emails that get circulated around the neighborhood. I'm not sure who made the request to Amy Patton, your records clerk. But it must have been a pretty wide-ranging area. It includes roads such as Dundee Lake Road, English Ivy, which is inside Sun City. It includes Echo Ridge, an accident on Echo Ridge in Heron Bay, Dobbin's Mill Road, accidents on Kilgore Road at the A and B Trailer Park, which is over by 1941, accidents along 155 by Jackson Road in front of the Pine Glen Trailer Park, stuff over Paxton's over by 1941, inside other surrounding neighborhoods. And I could go on, and it double and triple counts them because your accident count includes whether a fire truck or an EMS or, I'm not sure what law covers, but it's counted as well, mid-police, I guess. What we felt was relevant was where we're developing, which is Teeman Road. And we had him study the Jordan Hill and Teeman Road exit, the Sun City exit, ours, and our proposed exit, and then also Teeman and Highway 155. As you know, our project is exactly dead-on within the request and plan of your recently-done comprehensive plan. For this area, you define one to four units per acre, medium to high-density, for everything from Sun City over to, basically over to Heron Bay. We're within that parameters. Your zoning ordinance does allow and have provisions, I guess allow subject to approval, has provisions for this. We're not creating a new category for something that doesn't exist. There's zoning with this category in multiple places in the county already. So we're not planning or proposing anything new. We're trying to be unique or creative or sneaky. It's just a standard way to produce what Molly Graham defined as a way that people can achieve the American dream of buying houses. I'm not sure why she's opposed to a subdivision with for-sale houses and simultaneously wants people to have the ability to buy houses. She did think the ten percent rental cap was too high. I'm in basic disagreement about the negativity towards rentals. I do think there's a huge percentage of the population that does need rental housing because of the request from the county. This wouldn't be one of those locations. But I don't see them as a negative, even though there won't be any here. I hear words like Section 8 housing, that sort of thing. Again, more targeted fear tactics, which I also disagree with. Mr. Ross was saying that our proposed plan doesn't match the abutting communities. Our lots are seventy percent, or bigger than seventy percent of the lots in the abutting community. And our minimum house size is bigger than about seventy-five percent of the houses in the abutting community. Next to us, we have homes ranging from twelve hundred square feet up to eighteen hundred square feet. And then one group of three home styles that go above two thousand. So we'll actually be on the larger side of both the lots and the houses compared to the neighborhood. So I don't understand the concept of doesn't match. I've actually, knowing some of the people here, checked their lot sizes. And I think we actually heard from about three or four people that actually live on lots that are equal or smaller size than what we're proposing. So I'm not really sure why they're opposed to them. Molly Graham again mentioned the schools needing funding. I agree. This project is close to a hundred and twenty million dollar addition to the tax base of the county. Sadly, we don't draw that many families to homes right now. We do get younger people, hopefully that will grow and develop families. But for now, based on the test scores of the school, it is a bit of a challenge to sell to families in the county. I think that's a chicken and egg thing. But as you know from your industrial development, everything else growing the tax base will help provide funding for that over the long run. Michelle Dugas, in the middle of being opposed, also suggested that we improve Teeman Road in front of the project. We agree. We have no problem doing that. We think it'll be wise, it'll make it safe, and it should eliminate any questions whatsoever. And let's see. And then Mr. Moss suggested we all chill out and take a deep breath and do more study, which I think is what you were doing for the last year or two with your long-range comprehensive plan. You studied the entire county, you focused on the area where growth should be focused. We're in the dead center of that path, and we're one of the few properties in your entire area where the proposed one to four-unit per acre density should be applied, that actually has sewer. I would say seventy percent of the land that shows in your study as that kind of density doesn't have sewer access. So by nature, we'll be septic-sized lots only until perhaps sometime long in the future. So this is one of the few properties that actually is functionally capable of meeting your long-range study to provide at least some degree of growth in the county. We wish we could do more affordable housing. I agree with, I don't know who it was that suggested it. Given land development costs, construction costs, everything else, we can't get down into a low-price, cheap, affordable housing. Because of the square footage, a lot of the houses that are in Sun City are gonna be a fair bit cheaper than what we can provide with the minimum square footage, with lot size, that sort of thing. I do agree the county does need affordable housing, it just might need to be some other location. I think I hit everybody's concerns for the most part. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has. I'm glad to see relatively small turnout from considering our abutting neighborhood is three and a half thousand people. And I'm, again, happy to answer anything you would like to ask me.
Do you not have a question? So, Mr. Davison, I had a, this is the design map that's in our packet, but I seem to have saw a different map that basically showed green space between the individual homes. And what happened with that? Yeah?
So, not that you can see it from here, but that's the actual center turn lane design for Teeman. It would still be subject to your own DOT review and probably the Fire Department as well. Yeah, this is the revised plan. This is now the two hundred and ninety-five block plan. It's probably most prevalent. I don't know if it's a little lazy here, I don't think. We took lots out of the center core, and that whole strip in the center, we basically expanded as more open space, which was requested by one of the commissioners at the last meeting. We pulled some of the lots apart and lengthened some of them as well. Basically, by eliminating forty-eight lots, it added about sixteen acres of extra open space within the neighborhood. And that's kind of spread around. But based on comments we had last time, the biggest drive seemed to be to put it in the center of the community. So we didn't add more to the perimeter, we added more to the center.
So I guess my question then is, well, I have two questions. First of all, I am totally not good with the entrance because it's in that curve. Not trying to make you go and do something different, but that is just, it's not your fault that the curve is there. It's really the county's issue because we, in our comprehensive plan, we have said that we wanted this particular kind of growth in the northern corridor of the county. And that is where sewer is. And development follows sewer. So my concern is that there's just no way to make it safe in that curve and then have that entryway just as you come out of the curve.
Yeah, actually, it's a forty-five mile an hour speed limit both ways. There's a recommended, but I think not enforced, reduction to thirty-five miles an hour coming eastbound as you come around the curve. The big sweeping curve off the site to the left is the key issue you're talking about from a safety point of view.
Let me just see which way you're going. Oh, now I'm at the top.
Yeah, yeah, at the top. That's Teeman Road there. And the big sweeping curve is where that Teeman Road would continue off to the left.
Where it goes back then, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm just saying?
Of the twelve accidents right in that Teeman-Smoke area, nine of the twelve were on that curve, and they were all one-car accidents. So it's people that are probably going too fast and turning the corner. And, you know, I don't know the extenuating circumstances of them. But, yeah, the key was to locate that entrance as far to the east as we did, where the road is straight. And then if you go back to the, I don't know if you can see that well enough, but that is a, the straight, so the decel, the left turn lane as you're coming westbound has stacking, it's two hundred and seventy-four feet of stacking, which is roughly twelve, thirteen cars. So it can hold twelve or thirteen cars stopped to turn left into the neighborhood. And then traffic will continue going by on the right-hand side. And you have the same situation. You've got an oversized decel lane going, when you're going eastbound, turning into the neighborhood. So the other recommendation is, when you're leaving the neighborhood, to have dual, which it's hard to see there, but striped. People are leaving, turning left, they can sit there, but people turning right can go past them and turn ahead. So, yeah, I think it will be, honestly, I think in the long run, the most unsafe intersection along Teeman Road is the entrance to everybody's neighborhood here, which is the Sun City Road that accesses onto Teeman. It is, I don't know, it's a fair distance to the?
Further up back.
Yeah, it's, well, it's kind of off the map to the west. The number of houses you have out there, coming out of there are ten times what's here, and there's no left-turn decel lane. So people will be coming around that, they'll go past our neighborhood, fine. They'll come, turning around the corner, and then you'll cross the intersection at Sun City. Where if somebody's sitting on Teeman to turn left into Sun City at that issue, then I do think you have a problem.
There is a left-turn lane there. There is a left-turn lane.
There is now a center-left turn lane? Okay, perfect.
Okay, so what about, my other question is, is there a plan for sidewalks along the front of that development? Isn't that part of our ordinance?
It is.
Okay, so, and then the other question I have is, will there be privacy fences between these homes? I mean, like, will I look out my backyard and can look in the backyard of somebody?
It'll be optional. People will be allowed to do them. The HOA will control the style to make sure that it's not obnoxious to anybody else. But, yeah, it'll be optional. We also pulled them back off of Teeman Road, and that'll actually be bermed and landscaped. So you don't, the goal is that you don't see the houses at all.
So the green space that you developed, where I would have been asking if there was a privacy fence, is that going to be an undisturbed buffer, or is that gonna be a planted buffer?
Between lots to lots, they'll be graded out, just to get lots level and to get drainage to flow. It will be graded, and then you have to plant it afterwards. Backyards are usually planted by individuals, however they want to landscape their yard. Some people do fences, some do planting.
Right, but I'm speaking to, yeah, I'm speaking to where you're showing us on this plan that there has been added green space. We're just saying that's grass. I'm asking you if those are trees already there that will remain there? Or is that just gonna be a twelve feet of grass or four feet of grass between?
It varies all over the property. We'll basically leave trees where we can, where you don't have to degrade them. The way it's been designed, where we left more open space, we'll probably save more trees than originally planned.
So you'll plant?
We'll plant a huge amount of trees. As we do and has historically done for the last twenty years, we plant a pretty massive amount of trees throughout the neighborhood. We have to be, we're finding it, we have to be careful not to overplant them as Heron Bay started to grow into a total canopy at this point, where they're actually, you know, we planted them at fifty-foot spacing, and twenty years later, they're wanting to remove every second tree, but, yeah.
Do we have a landscaping requirement, guys?
Yes.
So that they'll have to meet those requirements for tree size and the right kind of tree and?
Yes, ma'am.
I have another question, but it went out of my head, so if somebody else wants to ask?
Yeah, I got one. And you may have mentioned this before somewhere, may have missed it. But the cost, the starting cost of these homes, how much are we talking about again?
I would hope that we could get them into the low, or into the high three hundreds, three eighty, three ninety. But I think the reality, the bulk of them will be four hundred to about, in the fours, basically. And then some of the ones on lots that open up to open space, that sort of thing, will probably go to the fives.
And your HOA, I know I've wrote right in here, of course, I know we have to look at it when it's, once we get to the final plan, if we get there. Is there any, how do you see that? As far as, you know, I know how HOAs can be, you know? I mean, sometimes it works for you, sometimes it doesn't. So as far as the restrictive piece of that, I mean, what does that look like?
Yeah, it's mandatory homeowner association. We form it at the front end. We run it as declarant until it's, we turn it over. We have to turn it over. They vary, but usually when we're within ten percent of build-out. Generally, what we do is, we have five people on the board, and as we get to fifty percent, we add one of the residents. And we add an advisory committee of the residents in the interim period. So they basically are, become the voice, and they learn how the HOA runs and how the finances work.
About those fees, have you added what those fees will run?
Here, with a pool, they'll probably run about seven hundred dollars a year, probably, eight hundred. It doesn't, it won't have the full lawn maintenance services and things like that, or they'll have to take care of their own yard. But it will have the common area, and it's got a fairly significant amount of open space to manage.
And that a hundred and twenty million that you've mentioned about would increase our tax base? That's based on the four hundred thousand dollar home?
Yeah, I just did a rough math, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
What is our street light requirement? Does it, or do we even have one? Because I've heard several people express concern about street lights at the entrances and stuff.
We do have a street light requirement.
Commissioner would follow your standard street light ordinance, and they would come in and request to be a street light district.
Commissioner Bolden, I think the request is on the intersection of Teeman, so that it would be lit. And, yeah, there's, the way it works, there actually is existing poles that are both sides of the entrance, just by chance the way it laid out. So probably it'll be telescoping lights in both of those, which should light the whole intersection.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Commissioner Dutton?
You've hired a private person that you guys paid to do a traffic study. And we spoke last time, so sorry if I come off like I'm cross-examining you, but that's the nature of my job out of here. So, and yet, I'm holding in my hand a printout from the Sheriff's Department. This is the kind of thing I have to look at all the time.
Yeah, I have the same one.
So taking out all the ones that don't have Teeman Road on Dobbin Circle, North McDonough, taking out all of those, and also eliminating all the ones where law enforcement and EMS and fire, there was sort of multiple things. So just looking at individual incidents. This printout from the Sheriff's Department says there were fifty-eight incidents just on Teeman Road since the beginning of last year. And if you count all of the incidences on Teeman Road and at the intersections with Teeman Road, you get to seventy-nine total wrecks on Teeman Road, not including doubles, not including things that don't involve Teeman Road. Why does your private traffic study that you guys paid for say that there were twelve? So why is there a sixty-nine wreck difference? Like, that's a pretty big disparity.
Probably by the radius and how far. Teeman's a long road. Uh, one of the gentlemen from Sun City, I think, actually located every single one of these on a map and did his own graphics and visuals. And he came up with, uh, he has them spread out in the various places all around the, the county. And I think the further you go, the more you, you know, the more you're gonna capture basically at every intersection.
So once they get a thousand feet from the entrance, it's no longer your problem?
Uh, it's, well, it's, it's never, um, I, I don't know how, how far you define it, I guess it's, where, where are you at? I don't know. Timon Road. Is it a problem with Timon gets over by towards nineteen forty-one? Is that this traffic or did they turn north of, um, Jordan Hill Road? I'm not sure. Uh, are there other people coming by? Is the tr- the traffic, eh, according to this gentleman's analysis, the last five years, the traffic numbers have actually declined. I haven't seen it, uh, myself, so I haven't analyzed it, but.
So you make a good point. So actually, we might should include the things that turn off of Timon Road. Cause people, like you said, turn off of Timon.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's accidents all through here.
Now, of course, in that seventy-nine number, I didn't get to any of the ones that turn off of, this is just the Timon Road.
Yeah, I, I think if you, if you were to, you're, you're going into a question where I, I've got the same printout that she circulated around the neighborhood. And it, and it's pretty broad, it's undefined as to what's included. So I, I don't know the basis of these. You're adding up numbers that I have no clue, but, you know.
So this, just because this part of my job is looking at these.
Sure.
So this isn't every incident, right? So it wouldn't count domestic violence. So if you look here, it says on the nature column, that's the last column, those are accidents. And every single one on this entire printout is accidents. This is only accidents. Um, so again, I, my concern is that you've done, done a traffic study as we requested and it says twelve and a simple open records request from the sheriff says seventy-nine just on Timon Road. Now, that said, let's look at just your-
Before you do that, I'd love to know, that, I don't know, I see the open records request in, which is in response to your open records request. No idea what was requested, no clue.
No, that, that's fair. What this is, is a printout of all the accidents in the, in the last year. Yeah, yeah. So it says accidents.
Yeah.
So it's gonna have all the accidents. It may, it may have skipped some of the accidents, that would be weird.
It duplicated some of them.
Yeah, they've, a lot of them are duplicated.
No, now, my arg- my argument, only argument with this is it's very deceiving. What, what about the private property accidents? I mean, cause there's a crap load of them that happened, I mean.
Yeah, this doesn't tell you.
That aren't recorded. That's right.
They're listed along the side with this as an accident. I mean, it's an accident report, just like a roadway accident report, just private property. So they, they're included in here also.
So let's-
So the, the answers, I'm not sure, I don't know how they're defined between the two, so I certainly wouldn't begin to try to compare them, cause I have no idea.
Well, I guess that's the issue. Cause we ask you to come back with a traffic report.
Redundant.
And we, we don't really have it.
Right, but this one doesn't-
Actually, I was asked to come back with an independent third party traffic report. Got no, no direction from me, none whatsoever. It's like, it's like if I, um, I can't get them to change their numbers. They went and did independent traffic counts, they did the whole thing. So.
Have you, have you gotten a traffic report from this company before?
It's a little bit like I hire the engineers that do our stormwater drainage.
Sure.
They're expected to meet their, their approved standards and, and deliver something that's, and that, that's the same. I mean, we, we basically hire people all through the, uh, construction and development process that are independent accidents.
Um, have you gotten traffic reports from these folks before?
Sorry? Uh, yeah.
How many times?
Uh, three, four, probably. Over fifteen years, twenty years.
So other times you've used different traffic folks or?
No, we don't do them very often.
You just don't do them, right?
No.
Um, let's, let's talk about the, the twelve accidents that they said. You brought up a very good point. Nine of those twelves were on the curve in question. They're on the curve where your, um, entrance is gonna be. That's, that's, that's the information that you gave us, right?
That's what, no, that's what the traffic engineer provided.
But I mean, but, but you-
I don't know, I don't know how you count. I, I don't know the answer. All, all I can do is trust the independent traffic consultant.
Okay.
And he's the one who did the studies, he's the one who pulled the data.
But, but you don't know why your independent traffic consultant that you over the years have paid several times to do traffic studies for you, is so different than the, the printout from the sheriff's department? You, you don't know that.
Correct.
The, duh, does this community, does this proposed community have a fifty-five or older cap on it?
No.
You, you keep comparing it to the surrounding neighborhoods and using even, even in the, on the screen here, Sun City Peachtree has the, the comparison, but Sun City Peachtree is a fifty-five and older community, right?
Uh, yeah, I don't compare it. Actually, I'm responding to everybody else who's been comparing me to the neighbor.
So, um, there's not a lot of kids in the fifty-five and older community. Right? So they don't have a lot of weight on the schools.
Yeah, correct. We don't-
There's no school buses that go to Sun City at all.
Kids in any of our neighborhoods, Spalding unfortunately, correct, I agree.
Um, but there, but there will be here.
I hope over time. I do, I do hope that, yes, I, I do hope that families will find a place that they wanna move to and live in.
And, and there will be in the two hundred and forty-seven houses that are gonna be next door.
Don't know.
But I think it's safe to assume that there will be. There's not a fifty-five and older requirement there, right? Right? I mean, there's-
Somebody else probably, no idea.
Um, did your traffic study take into account anything other than your property? Or did they look at all the other things that are already approved and are gonna be built? All the hundreds of other houses that are also gonna feed on a Timon Road?
They, they took into account what is known at the time, but who knows what you guys will allow? You might not, I mean, right now, your comprehensive plan, if, if it was built according to the plan at four units per acre over whatever it is, fifteen hundred, two thousand acres, uh, you'd be at eight thousand homes there. Now, I know there's, there's zero sewer to allow that. Um, so, yes.
I think you bring up a good thing that I'd like to talk about as well. You, you keep sort of touting this, uh, uh, ability to get a variance down to have more houses per acre than, than what you're asking for. Just, uh, you can go four houses an acre. Um, and your, one of the conditions is, is three houses per acre at max, right? Three dwellings per acre max. That's one of the conditions that you guys are okay with. Um, but that's based off the ninety-nine acres, right?
Correct.
So it's, it doesn't in, in, take out the two acres for the fire station. It doesn't take out the twenty, thirty acres for green space.
Sure.
It doesn't take out for the stormwater access.
Correct.
So if you go down to the forty acres thereabouts that are left, um, which is going to be what is individually owned by the individual homeowner, right? Like, not public land, not HOA land, just the land.
Don't know that number.
That, I've, I've done the math, it's around forty acres. Um, and in fact, your, by your standards, it says six thousand square foot, which is less than one-seventh of an acre. That's the minimum requirement for, for yours. And they all look pretty uniform if we go back to the map. They all look right about that six thousand square foot. Some, some are kind of on cul-de-sacs, so they kinda widen at the back end. Um, so they might be larger than that, but even if you do that math, that still comes out to about that forty acre of total individually owned space. So if you-
Is it a preference not to do open space? It sounds like it's a-
No, no, no.
It's a penalty to provide open space using your math, which I-
It, it's, it's not a penalty, it's a requirement to provide open space. It's a requirement in our zoning to provide open space. But I think it's deceptive to use land that isn't even gonna be part of this development. Land that's part of a cemetery, land that are roads, land that are green space, wetlands that you can't use and say, "See, we're not as dense as we could be." When in reality, you have packed these houses in to be one, uh, seven houses, more than seven houses per usable acre. So if, if we are going to allow this development, I like these conditions. I'd like to add a word to those conditions and change that three dwellings per one acre to three dwellings per one buildable acre. That means acres that are going to be privately owned by individual homeowners. Let's take the total actual area that is going to be used for the homes and say you can have three homes per acre of the actual space that you're using to build. If he'd have bought five hundred acres behind it and he's not developing that, "See, look at how thinly we're densed. We're, we're only one per six acres." You shouldn't be able to count all that. Look at the neighborhood that you're building. In the neighborhood that you're building, you're building seven houses per acre, more than seven houses per acre, when you go by your six thousand square foot lot size. Now, at the same time, uh, again, this, this works in areas where, where it works. Where there isn't a bunch of kids running around, where there isn't crying babies at night and you're eight foot from your neighbor's house uh, and you can hear their newborn all night long. Like, it, it works in a fifty-five and older community with an awesome HOA that makes sure that kinda stuff doesn't carry over to the neighbors. It, it works where you have an HOA that says you must have fences between all the contiguous lots.
So just if I, if I'm clear, so what you prefer is that I, even though I added all the extra open space, remove that again. So I, I maximize my building to all the buildable area and I don't donate the fire station and I don't do the prim- the expanded buffers that we did and push out and use to the actual edge of everything and ignore the desire for better open space, ignore the need for the public use, ignore the buffer for aesthetics along Timon Road a- and all of that and, and just squeeze everything in everywhere I can rather than pay attention to stuff that makes it a better design, a better community.
I would like you to abide by the requirements in our zoning. It must not adversely affect existing uses and essentially the, the rest of the neighborhood. Connecting to your property is going to be a two hundred and forty-seven unit place. We like lots of buildings, we love it. Those are over an acre each house and they have more green space than what you've proposed. So I, I'm not saying, "Hey, get rid of all your green space." I'm saying, "Hey, this doesn't match the neighborhood, this doesn't match the area, this doesn't match the region." Eh, it doesn't take into account all the traffic that's gonna be there. It doesn't take into account, uh, the, the realities on the ground. It, eh, I, I'm sorry, comparing it to something that shouldn't be compared to a fifty-five and older community, even though they're contiguous, is a false comparison.
If I may, you're continually comparing to a two hundred and forty-seven unit community, which I think is down about a mile down, uh, dirt, a, a dirt road, right? They couldn't develop right now, believe. Um, and I assume to get two hundred and forty-seven acres, they're gonna have to deuse sewer. And I'd be curious to understand what their sewer plan is. If it's a pending planned development, where it's coming from would be intriguing to me.
Oh, all, all great questions, all great questions. But what, what we're talking about tonight is you, you keep saying, "Hey, this is fine and it works with the community." And what I've repeatedly shown tonight is that what you're proposing doesn't. Density level that you're proposing is denser than the city of Griffin.
Okay, so then, so then the city's desire then would be the one to four units per acre.
I'm not sure what the city's desire is.
Or the county, sorry. So Max had on the, if I understand correctly, eliminate the open space down to the minimum, which I understand, because you want me to retain usable land. Don't give up the excess land for the fire station because that costs me as well. Don't do the buffer on the, on the highway. And then work within the comp plan, which is up to four units per acre. So take up to four units per acre and pack it in. That, that seems to, if that's the intent that I'm trying to understand.
So what, so we know that you can't build on, on, um, wetlands.
Correct.
We know that there's buffers that you have to have.
Correct.
We know that there's green space requirements that you have to have.
Correct.
So the idea that I'm asking you to get rid of all your green spaces is ludicrous. The idea that I'm saying, "Pack it in as tight as I can." Eh, we, we know that that's not true because I, I'm, I'm really sorry to interrupt you, I'm sorry. What were you saying?
I'm sorry, interrupting you, which is not fair for the sound.
So when, when we're, when we're talking about, "I'm gonna pack it in," like, wh- what I, what I really, really dislike when builders come in and they say, "No, trust us, we're gonna have this awesome development." I'm not the kinda builder that would do that. And then you turn around and you threaten us to do exactly that, you lose some trust. You lose some trust. And we have to trust you that what you're gonna build is what's gonna be good for this area and what you say that you're gonna build. And then when you threaten us with, "Oh, but Luke, I can do this." You, you can if we vote to let you. So don't come at me with some threat that's an illusion.
I have done two developments in Spalding. So I, you've developed, you've worked with a lot of developers, a lot of them, I assume. And probably a lot of them haven't done what they've promised, right?
That's correct.
That's a very probable statement, probably well justified.
Yes.
I've done two projects in Spalding. Harren Bay and Sun City. And curious to know where I didn't deliver on a single promise that I made to anybody who's been in this room.
Have you, have you driven through the area of, uh, uh, Harren Bay that's in Spalding County? That's currently under, under construction? Do you think that it looks like Sun City? Sun City's awesome, it's great. It's a fifty-five and older community that bears no resemblance to what you're trying to build here. The drive through-
Harren Bay itself owns fifteen different styles within one neighborhood.
Drive through the Spalding County part that's being built in Harren Bay right now. Drive, drive through it and then come and try to pitch me that because I'm gonna laugh at it.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I got a comment. I, I, I think part of what needs to be understood is that every time someone comes in for a subdivision or a special or whatever else, over the years that I've been here, I have always questioned why they're using the pond, the drainage pond and the this and the that for green space.
Green space.
It is how it is. That's how it is. I mean, unless we wanna change the ordinance to make it be something different, that is how it is. The other thing is that if you have sewer by law, we have decided that we will give more density. That is how our zoning plan is set up. And so consequently, there's been three other developments down the street and, well, yeah, three, Sun City on the other side, that have plans to develop there. And I, and as much as I'm not really happy with the way this entrance look, I don't feel comfortable in denying this organization the same thing that we have granted everyone else. Everyone else got what they're getting because they got sewer or if they're on a larger piece of property, they will be two acres and a septic tank. And so, but, but, you know, that is, that is what, I wanted to explain that to one of the gentlemen about why is it we're allowing all of that development. That is why all of that development is in that spot. Because Community Sewer built a sewer plant that can provide sewer to anybody who wants to develop in that area. What I do know is that after this, if this is approved, there won't be any more sewer. I mean, except for the buildings that are already out there, they've reserved it. So, you know, we can sit here and beat this up all day, but you know, the same thing that we talked about as far as the people coming out, having two cars or three cars and kids driving out, it is the same problem. We need to fix that road. That, that's one of the first things that happened.
Well, it has here, he's working with Public Works, I think it's one of his-
No, but I'm saying the road is, is messed up anyway because you, if, if he's got two ninety-five, uh, the other people, Big Pines has got five hundred, Sun City's putting another three fifty. I don't care if you don't have big trucks on that road, that's gonna be a lot of traffic on there. We need to fix that road. We need to take the curve out of the road. I know that's not what the meeting is about tonight. But I'm saying, a lot of what I'm hearing you say to him about accidents is not because there's so much housing as it is that we got a bad road.
Exactly.
So, so I, I mean, I, I, I hate the fact that, that you're not happy, James, and I, and I get it, about the, the space of land that's left. But that's the way our development ordinances are set up, that you provide green space, you provide all the other stuff and they use the total number for, of all the land to figure out what units you get. Um, is that correct, Newton, or am I making stuff up?
If you were in a conservation subdivision, which this is not,
Right.
then there are restrictions on whether wetlands and other things can be part of that green space and those requirements are set up. We're dealing here with a proposed cluster development, which is single-family detached homes. That, those restrictions for the conservation subdivision do not apply here. The reason being that as a special exception subdivision, what we have done with the special exception subdivisions is trade off design and amenities for lot size and house size. Because we learned years ago that a big house on an acre does not mean a quality development. Now, James, I believe the development you're talking about is Grayson Park, which is in the village node in Spalding County and not part of Harren Bay. Cause I went out there to see that as well. Um, the, I will tell you that I was disappointed in seeing that. But that does have a rental restriction on it comparable to this. But that does have a rental restriction on it comparable to this, and we were able to get them to agree to that.
Who built that?
It's being built by Starlight. Starlight or Starbright, which one is it, Brian?
Starlight.
Starlight.
All right. And I will tell you that in that circumstance, we need to look at that and see whether that is consistent with what we proposed years ago in the Village Node requirements.
This one.
Now, this is a special exception subdivision, it will not have an age restriction, or as proposed, will not have an age restriction, will not have, uh, but will have a rental restriction, and, of course, that's voluntarily set by means of them agreeing to that as a condition. And we have gotten the pictures of the dwellings that would be proposed, that Charles will have to enforce, to see whether or not they satisfy this criteria when they come in for The key here is we have set a requirement, or set a development plan in the comp plan in that area for one to four units per acre, provided they are served with sewer. And, and knowing that Charles was not here, I will take, Eva and I had to work with Mr. Davidson on this, the staff recommendation is tied to the comp plan. Now, yeah, I understand, y'all can disagree, y'all are, y'all are the elected legislature, y'all don't have to agree with the staff.
Right, right.
It's fine.
I, I wanna point out, this is not a personal attack on you. I don't mean to come off like that, but just as you said, we've been burned virtually every time, and I would love, love, love if you proved me wrong. Like, I would, I would love to eat crow on this, I'd buy you lunch if this turns out exactly like you say it's gonna be.
I could, I could prove you right, probably.
I would lo- I would love.
The current, the other thing to, to consider in this is basically, I think the way the county zoning has been written over the years is to basically to provide incentives in exchange for something, so-
That's correct.
It's basically density in exchange for open space and street tree programs and sidewalks and-
And aesthetics.
Larger square footage and now rental restrictions. The current, it's, we're not changing, zoning is R2 right now, and it has special exceptions, it has variances, and, and right now, it was limited to 57 lots because we were septic. That's how many septic lots fit on the property. With sewer, that could be quite a bit different. The current zoning has no, and its current special exception is no architectural requirements, no rental restrictions, and a much smaller minimum house square size. So standing here, yes, I'm asking for more lots, but I'm actually asking to do lots that actually have architecture requirements, that have open space, that have an amenity center, that have sidewalks, that have street trees, that have a rental cap on them, so you don't have a rental community next door, and a larger house size. So it's not like I'm out greedily asking for, "I had 100 small lots and I want 300." It's, it's, part of the process is, it's gonna be a lot more expensive development to build because of all those requirements, and that, the trade-off for me is, and frankly, any developer, is the added density. When you spend all money on all those extra things, the way it's zoned now, you're gonna set a certain standard of house, it just is what it is. I mean, that's a lot of what you have in the county. You can have a basic house on a basic lot with nothing, really. When you start adding all those features, that's when you can start changing the underlying housing stock in the county. How are you gonna get more nicer houses, more expensive, they don't necessarily have to be bigger, but higher quality, better finish, to draw a different character of people, et cetera, et cetera, will be to do that, to add the open spaces and the sidewalks and the trees, and the buffers, and the better quality architecture. And I guess, rental restrictions, I'm still not a big fan of, but I'm fine with it. All, all of that stuff is the trade-off that you have to face, and I think that's not just this project, it's probably anything in the county. Nobody's gonna come in and just say, "Hey, I wanna do, I'm allowed to do 100 lots, I just wanna do 100 lots that are with sidewalks and street trees and open space and everything else, but I'm still just gonna spend all that money anyway." They're just gonna knock it out, and you're gonna get your neighborhood that they're all over the county, frankly. And it, it is a decision, I understand it, a density change is a psychological problem for people at times, but I, I also, I also think there's a huge percentage of especially younger population that really have no interest in having a half-acre, acre yard to, to cut and maintain. And we do wanna draw, um, younger, higher-energy people into the county, and I think it'll be a good thing, um, and, and do, you know, there's a lot of people that can't afford to buy a house, but those that do, I wanna be able to offer something in Spalding that's equal or better than anywhere else they can buy. And, you know, it's what we've, we've done from day one. Everybody that lives here in Sun City hopefully is happy they're in Sun City. This was the same argument, this was a disaster, it's gonna be all these tiny lots and, you know, it's horrible because Spalding County is all about five-acre farms, and, and it, it does change, it evolves. I like the way you've done your land planning, the way you focus development in quadrants, which is logical, so if you wanna be a, if you wanna move to Spalding and you want rural lifestyle, you've got a huge area to pick from. If you wanna be in an urban area, you've got a cool growing urban center now, and then if you want a suburban, uh, but quality lifestyle, you've now designated that as this area, and we're trying to just accommodate it, so.
Okay, more comments? Any more questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion?
With conditions?
Yeah, approve with all of the conditions as recommended by staff.
Appeals and hold.
Uh, and with the instructions, everything the staff said, everything the staff said.
Variances.
Variances, yes, everything.
And, and variances.
Right.
All right.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. We get to not approve a variant?
No, the variances have been approved. The variances under ordinance have been approved.
Don't get me excited like that. Okay.
Soon to be back in a place near you.
Yes.
So, yes.
You're gonna be getting an ordinance next week, next month, that complies with new statutes governing zoning procedures that will put variance authority largely with you.
So we have a motion and a second, right?
Yes. Any more discussion?
I just wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, I don't like the fact that the Board of Appeals gets to do all of this extra stuff before we get here. I mean, if, you've already approved that the lot size is, you know, you got eight feet between eight, I think it's eight feet between the houses and, you know, how far you are from the curb. That's the kinda stuff I think we should be making a decision about. I don't know how we gonna fix that.
You will be going forward.
Okay.
New, new revisions to zoning procedures law requires that a zoning, that a variance that is required for a rezoning or a special exception comes to you with the rezoning or the special exception effective July 1. You will have an ordinance to that effect for your meeting on June 22.
Because we probably would've had a different scenario had, not trying to beat you down, had he not gotten the, the variances and the setbacks and, not that it wouldn't have been a negotiating point, but, you know, the Board of Appeals ain't got room to negotiate.
Yeah.
They don't got the power to do that. So anyway, not trying to beat you up, Brian, just a question.
All right.
Can I, can I bring up one more thing? Staff recommendation, I. Prior to the hearing conducted on the application before the Board of Commissioners, developers shall consult with the Spalding County Public Works Department to assess whether improvements to Teeman and Smoke Roads would be required as a result of the development on the subject property, and this is the part that I'm worried about here, and the degree to which contribution from the developer should be imposed. Why, why are we not putting this on the developer?
Well, it also says to work with our Public Works Department first, I think, too, so it wouldn't like you'd be making the, this is what I'm thinking, when I see that in there.
We have talked to them, but yes, I think it, still, the final detailed design would be subject to their review, but I think your question is, it's, the way it's still worded is, it's debatable as to who pays. I'm, I'm fully in understanding, and I don't mind if you make it a condition, that that widening will be our cost.
Okay, I, I just, I want that-
To be enough condition.
Yeah, that, that staff recommendation to be amended to say that, and the cost associated with that will be on the, like, 'cause again, I think it would be unfair to then come back and be like, "Well, how much are we gonna, you know what I'm saying?" Like, that'd be weird, like, let's do that.
It's about $400,000, so it's a not insignificant number.
So we made an, a J? Will that be J?
Or would I? We can ju- I think we can just amend I.
Okay.
And, and then just change it, everything after that I, to just say, "And the developer shall be responsible for the cost."
Assume, assume the call suffices. An amendment to the condition to require the developer to pay for the turn lanes and improvements at the entrance on Teeman Road.
That, that's, I'm talking about the ones on I here, it talks about improvements to Teeman and Smoke, if, if they're required as a result of the development.
On, on Smoke, they're not-
But their development doesn't go on Smoke.
James, they're not doing an entrance or anything on Smoke.
I'm, I'm just looking at I.
I understand.
Just looking at it as a, in a, in a vacuum, like, it leaves this kind of vague, who's responsible for paying for something. If we have to change Teeman, if we have to change Smoke because of development, right, then the developer should know ahead of time that if that's required, that's on, that's on.
She has to fund it, yes.
I, I don't think that he should have to fund Smoke Road.
Only if-
He does something.
It's required because of the development. You see what I'm saying? Like, if nothing is required to be done to Smoke because of the development, then yeah, he wouldn't have to-
How, how close-
Sorry.
No, I don't know.
How close is the, the proposed fire station to Smoke?
I don't know.
It's a good piece away from it, right?
Correct.
And none of the properties in the development are actually gonna open on a Smoke. I mean, I don't mind making it, but I'm just saying, I don't wanna give him a requirement that clearly has nothing to do with his development.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at I.
It's the wording I think James is talking about here.
Right, 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 it's the kinda ambiguity of, we're gonna figure out later who's, who's responsible for these costs.
We're not gonna figure out later, we know who it's gonna be.
You know what I'm saying, like?
It's the developer.
Again, if there's nothing required improvements on Smoke because of the development, then there's no cost to the developer, you know what I'm saying, like?
I get it.
Director, you got that?
Can we, do I, do I need to make a, a motion to amend the condition?
I need to amend my-
You would need, you would need to ask, you would need to ask Commissioner Flowers-Taylor to accept that as an amendment to her motion, and then ask if the second accepts that as an amendment.
Commissioner Flowers-Taylor.
I accept it.
All right, I'll second. Accept it, all right. Any more discussion?
I really, really, really hope that, I'm wrong, I really hope this is gonna be awesome, I hope, I hope this is wonderful.
All right, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Four, all those opposed, like sign, one, motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next item is, uh, item two, lift from the table and conduct a public hearing on application 23-03 Zulu, 715 West Hall LLC, owner, 4th Sixth Street, approximately 9.66 acres located in Land Lot 207 of the Second Land District. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to be, excuse me, removed from the Mill Village overlay. This applicant was tabled during the regular meeting held on February 28, 2023. Do I have a motion to lift?
A motion to lift rezoning application 2301Z.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, 5-0. Director.
Yes, sir. This resounding case is referenced as 23-01Z.
Would you ask the audience if they would please, if they're gonna have a conversation to step outside?
Yes, if you're having any more conversations, please step outside, we agree with having conversations, no problem, just please do it so that, uh, microphones don't pick it up and it doesn't bother the rest of us. Thank you very much.
Can we? It's still-
Mr. Gus?
Can we?
If you are gonna have a conversation, do you mind stepping outside? Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Gus.
Okay, thank you, let's go back, Director.
Yes, sir. This resounding case is referenced as 23-01Z. Applicant seeks to remove the property from the Millage, the, uh, I'm sorry, the Mill Village overlay to develop a tire distribution and retail store on the property. The owners of 715 WW Hall LLC do business under the name VT Tires. VT Tires is in the business of tire brokerage and sales. VT Tire's business is currently located at 715 West Whitehall Street in West End, Atlanta. The owners desire to move the business to this location. VT Tires obtains, obtains used tires from third parties, the tire, tires will be brought to this location and collected for sale and transfer to purchasers who will either repurpose the tires, retread the tires for resale, or shred the tires for reuse in another form. VT Tires also sells tires directly to customers. It desires to develop a retail business at this location.
But they're not gonna be shredding tires nothing there, right?
No, no. The property is currently zoned C2 for manufacturing. Under C2 zoning, the property may be used for A, wholesale warehousing operation, and B, tire store, C, tire retreading, uh, retreading. The property lies, I'm sorry, but for the restrictions, the regulations contained in Mill, the Mill Village overlay, they're, they're trying to move away from that so they can just, uh, restore this property to, to a point of allowing, uh, retail sales. Because the property is already zoned C2, the analysis of this application does not require review of whether the property or request complies with the comprehensive plan. Applicants' request to remove the property from the MVO requires a zoning decision. A zoning decision was made when the MVO was applied to the property, and a zoning decision is required to remove it. Therefore, this application is governed by UDO Section 414. Our staff recommendation is as follows, given the zoning analysis, uh, the condition, the recommendation is for a conditional approval of applicant's rezoning application to remove the property from restrictions of the MVO as follows, if I may read the conditional, the conditions. They read as follows, A, use, uses on the property as zone C2 shall be limited to retail tire sales, tire distribution and brokerage. B, tire, tires on the property shall not be repurposed, retread, or shredded on-site. C, all tires on-site shall be maintained inside of buildings, no outside tire storage will be permitted. D, rezoning shall be conditioned upon the site plan entitled "A New Development for Marshall Lewis" dated August 2, 2022. The site plan shall be revised to delete the driveway on the property along the eastern and northern boundaries currently shown on the site plan. The site plan shall be revised to show a designated truck parking area for use of trucks that are on-site for the business. Then item E, uh, the site plan shall be revised to provide for the removal of asphalt located on the property that fronts along Park Avenue to substantially reduce the existing impervious service area, which shall be replaced by a landscape buffer. Item F, the new tire store to be constructed in the area designated as new sales office on the site plan shall be constructed to appear as shown on the proposed retail building for VT Tire, prepared by John Knight, uh, the architect. G, all ingress and egress to the property shall be shown on the site plan from a new entrance to be constructed at the intersection of Rehoboth Road and Sixth Street. Item H, all existing buildings shall be brought up to a condition to comply with all applicable building and development codes before a certificate of occupancy or business license shall be issued. Item I, a construction renovation plan which identifies the activities required for the building shall be prepared prior to the consideration of this application by the Board of Commissioners, and it shall set forth a timeline with benchmarks by which required construction and renovations shall be completed. Item J, a 10-foot landscape buffer shall be planted along the property boundary and Park Avenue. K, a landscape entry and sign subject to approval of the county shall be erected at the main customer entrance shown on the site plan. So pretty much the theme of these conditions, all surrounded by the fact that we really need this, this site to be aesthetically way more pleasing than what it is right now.
Right.
Uh, that, that should be the ultimate priority, uh, because right now, it is an, uh, an aesthetic eyesore to the surrounding area, and so we have to make that a priority, that they can, before they do anything else, that is cleaned up and restored, and it could be something that- that is cleaned up and restored, and it could be something that that area, area could be proud of.
Have they agreed to that? Uh, we have one, uh, one person to speak.
Ms. Gwendolyn Lucas, if you would, please step forward and state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. I'm Gwendolyn Lucas, representing seven one five West Whitehall. Um, I reside at one nine five four Santown Road Southwest in Atlanta, Georgia. Um, yes, everything you said was correct. We are a wholesale and retail operation in business since nineteen seventy-nine. We do not shred anything on site. We don't have the machines for that. We, um, don't repurpose anything there. We just sell, um, wholesale and we sell retail. We did do a couple of, um, adjustments to the property. I sent pictures to Eva and, um, I think Susan and Attorney Galloway. We started working on it, but we were told to stop working because there, um, is a moratorium on land development or something until the end of May. That's what we were told by the Paragon Consulting Group. Um, we have not been able to do the landscaping out front yet because we don't have water. I went to the county of Spalding, Spalding County, and then they directed us to City of Griffin. So, two gentlemen said that they would install, um, one-inch pipes there, but we have to get a backflow. So, we're needing help to get the permit. And the Paragon Group has, um, recently sent us a new, um, document that I sent over to the office where they're gonna help us obtain the permits and all the necessary documents that we, that we need.
So, let me ask a question.
Go ahead.
So, that's in the county, right? So.
Yes.
Why is the city putting in a backflow meter for them?
Because it's on city order, I suppose.
No, we have our own city.
We do, but they do the maintenance for us, um, especially for the, the new construction pieces when it's so close to the city. Uh, and they actually do maintenance for us even if it's in the county. Uh, even as a Spalding County resident, I have to have a backflow preventer, and the city was the one that came out and put the backflow preventer in for, for my location.
So, do we have that for all of our water customers?
We do.
In the county?
Yes, ma'am. We have backflow preventers on all of our water customers, and you're required, um, under the ordinance to have the backflow preventer inspected once a year.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Anything else from you, ma'am?
Yes, that's the old site plan. We have a newer site plan that included the buffers and the greenery on it.
This one?
Yes.
I believe so, yes.
Yes.
And the, the space, proposed sales office, that's where this is?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And then the new site plan has a space for the truck parking and trailer parking? Okay, that's the one.
How?
Steve had, Steve had it, uh, we didn't, we didn't. Okay. That's why they have it. Passing around, okay. Okay.
The, I have a question about the site plan. The, the western edge of the trailer storage area, is that the property line? Like, or, or does the property line go into this? Is that, or is that a separate track?
No, that's the, that's part of the same track. That's one track.
You've got it on your screen now.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You see, like, track one?
Only the pink part is your property, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so like, that track one to the left of that is not.
Correct.
No.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, the, and I guess this is a county question. If this is approved, can we make it a no-through truck from Park Street to Jackson Road? I mean, is it Jackson Road, High Falls Road? Because I, my concern is I don't want anybody driving up and, and coming down that residential street with a big truck.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, in fact, that's one of the considerations that staff is currently reviewing is to impose no-through truck, commercial traffic on all of our county railroads. Uh, so it will be allowed by exception only, and that's in response to the eighty-eight thousand pound, uh, weight increase for commercial vehicles.
Okay, so, and one other question. Um, in the area that is, I was trying to make that bigger.
Is it working?
The area that is closest to, that's on the north end.
Go back.
That's facing, facing the street. How, my question is, how will trucks get around to that back part for that truck overflow? What, what is the route? Because it looks like we're at the edge of the property on all of this, and so I really don't see a way for, um, for a truck to get back there unless, does anybody, am I making this sense?
I know the pink is like the building, but it looks like it goes like around the right side and the back.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying. I, I think that's just a little bit. I don't know if a tran, a track.
You gotta get to the mic.
Their buffer with the.
Sorry.
The landscaping down in Park.
She was gonna show us up there.
Okay.
There is no clicker, unfortunately, or do we?
When you enter the property, there's, um, if you go to the right, you can go around the building. We cleared out all that space there.
So, you'll be able to park trucks that way?
Yes.
That's what I was trying to figure out, how would y'all get around there?
Yes, that's when we started cleaning out. Oh, I wish you could see the pictures. Can I email them?
You're good, you're good, you're good.
I don't know if these are the pictures or not. Are these the pictures she's wanting?
Are y'all gonna pass those down so we can see them?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Well, this is, it was just on the screen. I'm gonna go.
Okay. Oh, it's just, okay, it's nevermind.
It's on the screen, wasn't with us.
It's a good.
It wasn't in our packet before.
Yeah, there you go.
Ms. Lucas had anticipated doing more work.
Okay.
All right, so I'll get you around to the back.
There we go.
Yes.
Yeah, it's like, like, in between the buildings and like, where that proposed buffer's going, that, that's where the trucks drive to the back.
Yes.
Like, it still come in and out of Sixth Street there, and then.
But everything is.
Yes, coming out of Green Valley to Sixth into the property to the right around the building. Yes. And we cleared out that area there because the picture before or after had a bunch of trees, so we cleaned all that out.
That was good.
Um, McIntyre came and put a gate up because the storm had tore down the fencing there. Yeah, that's all cleaned out now. And the remainder will be done, but we had to cease work.
Sure.
We were in a moratorium, um, when this came to us initially. And it was because of that moratorium that we decided to do the Mill Village overlay. So, I said, and I know I remember saying this in the meeting, let's just not put them in there. But to be honest with you, Gwen, it was looking so bad over there. Um, you know, and, and we couldn't get, you know, your dad or whoever to, to do what we needed to get them. And so, that was part of the reason why it was put in there. But I felt all along that it should have been part of what the industrial part was. But he, you know, it had this zoning already, so, um, it's in my district. I would love to see that area cleaned up. The site plan looks good. The traffic flow looks good. I'm looking at these requirements.
Are you making a motion?
No, no, no. I'm just, I'm just telling her, because I, I feel kind of responsible that they're here.
Go to that one, one up from that one. Yeah, there you, no, there you go. Yeah. Can, can you zoom in on the buffer? I just wanna, just a little bit up, just a little bit up to the top of that picture.
I'm trying here.
There we go. So, I wanna, I wanna make sure that, and this might already be taken care of, and we might just use the shorthand here, but the, uh, loripetalium? I'm probably butchering that. The, the, the thing next to, because it's like, uh, claria.
Next to the magnolias.
And then magnolias, and then it kind of goes through the cycle of three. There's, there, other than the magnolias, there's a, a little bush version of those and a tree version of those. And I wanna make sure that we clarify that this is the big bushy tree version. It's designed to be a ten-foot site barrier, just like those magnolias. The magnolias, I know that they, they might say Little Jim Magnolias, they're gonna get bad. Um, but, but just so that we're clear, these are the big ones.
Have we talked to you about what kind of, um, tree that would go best right there? Has our development people talked to you about that?
Yes, uh, Mr. Buffington told us Confederate jasmine for the fencing.
Yeah.
And currently, there's already some trees there. He said that could stay there, and then we could add some more.
Well, it has a very specific six here, then ten, then ten, then, you know, like, it's a, I, and I love this configuration because it's, they're gonna bloom at different times. It's gonna be really pretty. I think it'll bring the whole neighborhood up. Like, I really, I just, I just wanted to clarify that those weren't the.
We're interested in.
That are the.
Director, we're interested in something tall, not little bitty dwarf or something along that line.
We got you, okay.
And Confederate jasmine smells beautiful, it's awesome.
Um, and what's this where footage gonna be of the resale office, your office space?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh. Don't tell me it's a haunted. Okay, maybe I'll just look at it.
I do know, we told the water company it would be four bathrooms, um, a break area, and a couple of offices. And a waiting, I do know that.
Because they're not gonna store anything there, they're just making this sale there.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask one more thing?
Uh, yes.
Um, if you were to grant the request, we have temporary electricity right now, and so the workers are limited in what they could do. Could we have more electricity? If it's.
Remember that.
Granted.
Yeah, I, I, I think that'll be everything done.
Oh, do we control that?
Well, we haven't been allowing them a permit because of the moratorium. But if you don't have to get a rezoning, then you can pull it.
Staff will have no problem allowing them to have full electricity.
You heard it from the man.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Could I address one suggested change? Because, um, because of the moratorium, look at, if you would, look at, um, condition I, which is the construction renovation plan. Gwen has contracted with Paragon to do all of that, but it's preparatory. So, I would ask that that be amended to require her to present to Mr. Reese, um, the construction renovation plan after the site preparation is done from Paragon within ninety days of completion of that.
Present site preparation plan?
Construction renovation plan and timeline within ninety days after the completion of the site prep work by Paragon.
Completion of site work.
Do you see it there? So, it's I, he's reading it from there.
Okay, you read it then. I'm trying to write it down.
Okay.
Maybe my brain hurts.
If I could, if you would indulge me one minute, I know we're at eight o'clock. This was a problematic property. It still is. And, and Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, as you said, there was good argument that it should not have been in the Mill Village overlay, but I would point out that by putting it in the Mill Village overlay, we've been able to reach this agreement with Ms. Lucas, which makes it better than it would have been.
Better than what we were gonna get.
So, to pull it out of the Mill Village overlay, we believe enhances the, and with the redevelopment of the property enhances the use. Is it still gonna be tires? Yes. Um, but a properly arranged facility for tire transfer and a landscaped property next to a residential neighborhood protected by fencing and buffers beats anything we're gonna see on that property anytime soon.
Absolutely.
I absolutely agree. All right. Okay. Make a motion to approve application twenty-three oh three Z with all the conditions included, including with application number, well, shall I say, letter I, to make sure that there is a ninety-day site completion presented with benchmarks by which required construction and renovation shall be completed. Are you all good over there? Nod your head, yes, nor, nor south. Okay, thank you. All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion pa. Thank you for staying so long and going through the other part, and thank you for what you're doing for our community. We truly appreciate it. It's gonna be much better because of what you're doing.
Thank you.
And your patience with all of this.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, uh, item F, new business. Consider request from MCI to approve the voracity benefits package being offered for Spalding County employees for FY twenty twenty-four. Dr. Ledbetter?
Mr. Chairman, as you remember from our discussion with Mr. Matt Bidwell, our broker for our insurance program for the county employees, uh, this is the pharmaceutical piece of the equation. Uh, they are in need of this contract being approved this evening so that we don't lose any, uh, we don't have a lapse in coverage between, uh, June thirtieth and July first. Uh, I believe that, um, Mr. Bidwell did a great job at presenting the material and provided us with the information that we needed. And our request this evening is that the board would approve for Chairman Davis to be able to sign the contracts and for subsequent, um, signatures by me to move this program forward to ensure that we've got our pharmaceutical aligned for fiscal year twenty-four.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a question before I do that. Uh, no, I'll make a motion to approve, and then I'll.
Okay, do I have a second? Second. A second, a motion and a second. Thank you, discussion?
So, is this, is Voracity like Express Scripps?
Yes, sort of. Um, Express Scripps is one of their competitors. Uh, but Voracity is a Georgia-owned company and a Georgia-managed company. Uh, so we feel like it, in, with Matt's, um, direction, we feel like that's the best option for us as a Georgia government to have a Georgia company take care of our pharmaceutical needs for us.
And can you explain the, the savings as well that we should, that the county should save on this?
Um, so according to Matt Bidwell, it appears that we will have a considerable amount of savings to the tune of about eight hundred thousand dollars.
But why?
Uh, they are managing the program differently than probably what, um, most people are accustomed to. They're looking to, uh, contract with our local pharmacies, and they pay them a very set amount for, uh, for dispensing the pills. So, if you go to Wynn's Pharmacy or to Kroger or Ingalls or Publix, uh, they have already pre-contracted with those companies that they will only afford them between five and eight dollars to do the, the fill rate. For Wal, uh, Walgreens, CBS, and there was, uh, may have actually been Walmart, I don't remember, so please forgive me. Uh, they charge, uh, between fourteen and eighteen dollars to fill that same prescription back to the pharmacy companies.
So, that's the cost of the prescription, and then they have just their fill, like, their fee, and so they cutting down that.
So, they're reducing, yeah, they're reducing that fill rate. They're, they're, they're captivating their cost for, uh, how much the charge is gonna be for the pharmacy to actually give you the bottle that's got your name and bills in it.
So, in this, with them, are, will we have people being able to get mail, mail it and prescriptions? If you're taking chronic care medications for blood pressure, will you be able to just mail it off and get ninety days' worth, or? I mean, because that, that is where some of the savings come.
Right, so one of the great things that I heard during the presentation that Mr. Bidwell provided was, um, the, the ninety-day supplies, you won't have to mail off anymore. You can go to your local pharmacy and you pay for two months' worth of prescription, You can go to your local pharmacy and you pay for two months' worth of prescription, and you get a three-month supply.
Okay, and what about formulary medication? So, you go to the pharmacy, they say it's ten dollars or whatever, but in real life, it costs three dollars because it's a formulary drug.
Right, so, um, I, I don't have that particular, I can't answer that. Mr. Bidwell, I think, did a great job. He was talking specifically about those pharmacies that are in-network and those pharmacies that are out of network. So, if you've got, uh, i, if you've got a formulated, uh, pharmacy or a compounded pharmacy, you may have to pay the twenty dollars at the pharmacy to or, to order that, that drug. Uh, if not, if you've got, uh, a formulary that is in pharmacy that you can gain, then you are back at the five-dollar copay. So, it really is a savings for not only the, the county, uh, but it's a savings for the employee as well.
And all the local pharmacies are included, all of them are in-network, all.
Okay, so, in the verat, in this Veracity, I guess it's a contract or agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't see any dollars exchanged. There's, there's not, they're not gonna charge us for providing this service? I mean, I know they get paid because the prescriptions get filled.
I think they get, I think they get it on that.
That is correct.
Okay, that's all.
Percentage.
Okay, anybody, any other discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries.
It was Gwen's motion and Ryan's.
I called Ryan's the second, was that first?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Gwen and Ryan.
Okay.
Ryan, I thought you were.
Do I have?
Our picture.
I have a motion. Do I have a second to adjourn?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero, we're adjourned. Thank you.
I sent it to your text that night. We took a picture. We both had a cur, I sent it to your text, Master Whit, it says, "I'm deliverable." I tried again. We were looking so cute.